Good evening. I'm councillor Schneegmaendran, cabinet member for planning and place making. Please note that this meeting will be recorded for broadcast on the internet after the meeting has taken place and can be viewed online at the council's YouTube website. There's no public gallery. There are four decisions to be taken this evening, three by councillor Wilson Markley, cabinet member for Public Realm, and I will be taking one decision. The last of this evening's decisions contains a confidential annex. This means I will need to resolve to exclude the public and press by virtue of paragraph three, brackets, information relating to the financial or business affairs of the authority, close brackets, of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. But we'll only move into private session if I decide to discuss the contents of the annex or there are questions from councillors that require the disclosure of the information contained within the annex. Should this happen, we will ask those not entitled to be present to leave the meeting and the recording will also cease. Can I ask if there are any councillors who wish to discuss the content of the annexes? No one is looking, so I assume not. In addition to myself and any other councillors who have decided to join the meeting, a number of senior officers, together with legal, service-based and democratic services colleagues are also in attendance, either online or at civic. Can I ask anyone who has joined us online to switch off their microphone and camera? We're not speaking, please. And for those in the room, please ensure you turn your microphone on when speaking. A supply of the papers for this meeting is available on the modern.gov pages of the council's website. I have not received confirmation of any members of the public who have registered to speak. I have not been advised in advance that any councillors have registered to speak. But for any councillors who have joined the meeting, please let me know if you should speak at the relevant time. Can I remind councillors and members of the public that any contribution should not exceed three minutes? The decision sheet will be published on the modern.gov pages of the council tomorrow, Wednesday 17th of September 2025. I will now pass you to councillor Wilson Markley to take her items.
Thank you very much, councillor Mahendran. The first decision I will be taking this evening is on procurement of advertising on highway assets. This is quite a straightforward decision. It's around how, it's around the framework that we will use to procure advertising on highways assets. It's a framework for one year with the potential to extend two more times. Do I have any? Would any officers like to add anything? Had to give it some thought there. Do I have any councillors who would like, oh, have any members of the public registered to speak? I didn't think so. Have any councillors got anything they'd like to say on this one?
Can you put your microphone on, please?
Sorry. Can I ask for some clarifications or am I just given the three minutes?
I believe it's three minutes. So if you ask your question for clarifications, the officers can respond.
So the first of it is, this was extended in, on the 31st of January for an additional three-year period, I read from your DD. From then, it was point 2.4. You said you will be utilizing that three-year period to further develop the sponsorship offer ahead of a retendering process that will commence in 2025. And you've also mentioned that you will be using this in, on this current paper, you may talk about the limited alteration to the existing contract. I worry because this is what I used to do for a living. I used to work in ad, I used to head one of the largest multinational ad agencies. We have been going with a flat fee for 10 years. I don't know what the flat fee is, it's not mentioned. A flat fee and 15%, which is well below market share. So I don't know what your, your current, when you say limited alterations, it'd be interesting to understand whether there is any opportunities for this 15% ad share to be increased to market share, which is between 20 and 30% at the moment. We have, I mean, it, there's, you know, we are currently talking about reusing this to start the process of retendering it. But there's been constant delays around this and we are losing revenue because we've, we've got into a contract in 2015 with no review clauses. We haven't used inflation indexation and just 15% revenue of 302 sites. Oxford, for example, just gave, awarded a contract last year to clear a channel and they are running on a 20.5% revenue share. They've got a 320,000 flat fee plus RPI plus 3%. So we are losing money and that's on 94 sites. So we are losing a lot of money on this.
There's quite a lot there, so I'm going to stop you. There are bits of that I can answer. There are bits of that. I could just hand over to Graham because Graham can answer all of it.
He'll try. Okay. So in answer to your question, are the fees remaining fixed effectively? No, they're not. So we are going to do a pricing model that will, will take through the tendering process. So the profit share could go up as part of this process. So you say the 15%. We would hope that the market, as you said, is more buoyant than that at the moment and we would expect them to tender a higher level than that. I mean, they could tender at any price, but we would expect it to tender higher than that. So when we say that things are remaining similar, we mean the specification of the contract in terms of the number and the location of the units and things like that. We're not talking about, it's a full tender through the framework. So, so, and that's a fair question. So we, we did extend for three years in 2023. We did intend to expand the scope of the offer. When we tried to look into that and do that, so potentially applying for more sites, different size sites and things like that, to expand, to increase the income, we found that the frameworks that were available didn't give us the scope to do that. And anyway, it turns out, and this was, you know, on us really, was that there weren't frameworks that had enough of the big providers on them to give a good market. So we need to do a full open tender. So we're using this to now do a full open market tender. That they're not on the frameworks together. They're not on any framework, existing framework together. So, so there are providers on this framework that we're going for, but there are not enough of the big ones all in one place for us to feel that we would get best value from a change scope at this time. So we need to do a full open market tender.
Sorry, councillor Muswell. So the papers come out in advance of the meeting. So if you have specific questions that you really want to get into, you can email officers ahead of the meeting. Additionally, that means that if we want to edit the decision on, on the night or make changes, that would make it a lot easier to do so. So sort of coming and having a sort of barrage of questions is certainly not the best way to deal with it. And.
You've had a response. Thank you very much. I appreciate your input. I'm sure Graham will take that away. Thank you. Councillor Geary, you had your hand up.
Thank you. It's a very simple question. Knowing this date is coming for three years.
This has been answered.
No, it hasn't been answered.
It has been answered.
Let me answer my question. You might then be able to say whether it's been answered, but I haven't asked my question yet. So let me ask my question and then you can happily cut me off if you wish to. Is that okay for me to ask my question? Yeah? Thank you. We've known this date's been coming for three years. You mentioned a few minutes ago that you were looking at doing things slightly differently, et cetera. That's fine. At what point did you figure out you weren't going to be doing things differently? Why aren't we just going for a proper tender? I mean, you know, did we just kind of forget this was coming? Because we should just have gone for a flat tender, shouldn't we? And gone out and actually procured the thing rather than doing a halfway house for a year and maybe a few extensions and then do it all again? Isn't that exactly what we should be avoiding? Just go out and tender what we want for the next five or 10 years or what it was going to be?
Graham has answered this question. It is because when we went to do it on a framework system, we realised that there wasn't everyone, all of the providers that we wanted to work with weren't on that system. We did that too late to go for a full tender. So we are having to extend it, yes, too late because we thought we could do it on a framework system. It was too late, so we are extending it so we can do a full framework to get best value from the process. Thank you. Wonderful. I'm going to make that decision. Thank you very much. I believe the next decision is mine as well. And that is, oh, my papers are all out of order. Item two. So this is about the Elmswell Gate Park and play area in east of Tower Gate. This is just a decision around the procurement for that. Nick or Paul, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Do I have any speakers, any public speakers registered? No. Do I have any councillors who would like to speak? David?
Thank you very much indeed, Chair. I, I do appreciate this is, this is a decision around the procurement and not a planning decision or whatever, but I couldn't miss the opportunity just to raise one or two things because I'm speaking also, just to declare this, as chairman of Wavindon Parish Council, as well as being one of the ward councillors. We submitted some comments in July as Wavindon Parish Council, which relates to the selection of the equipment that's intended to be supplied on the site, the dimensions of the mugger, which is intended to be constructed on the site, just exactly what was meant by a community event space, for what purpose. And also just a general comment that it would have been, and it's always easy in retrospect, but it would have been, I think, very useful to have engaged with the schools and the students of the schools just to find out what the users actually wanted and maybe just to spend a bit more time with, with Wavindon Parish Council as well, so that we could have had perhaps more of an input into it. Now, I do appreciate what you're deciding to do now is go out to the procurement. And I don't want to delay that because this has been a long time coming and is, people are looking forward to seeing the equipment in place. But we get one chance, one opportunity to put this sort of installation in place and then we have to live with it for donkey's years to come and we want to get it right. So I couldn't miss the opportunity just to say, we submitted this letter to planning with a number of comments, which we haven't heard anything back on yet. And I just want to make the point, we want to get the procurement right and therefore get some assurance from your officers that indeed it will be, everything I've said will be taken into consideration and the. You've got a bit of a nod going on here. And, and, and that, and that we can actually end up with something that people actually want to use. I'm going to be told we're not, we can't.
If I may provide some advice, which is that the rules prohibit commentary on an active planning application in this setting.
So we cannot give you that assurance. I have passed, you sent the details to me in an email this morning. I have passed those on. I am sure that responses can be given to you through email and I will make sure that happens.
Can I just then check the validity of the press release which has gone out, which is a very detailed press release, lovely photograph of yourself, standing by, standing by a street sign, which actually goes into some detail, which relates to the planning application and has now gone into the public domain? Should, in retrospect and in hindsight, legal advice have been sought before that press release was, was issued?
And live planning applications are in the public domain. So the info is there.
So I think what Thomas is saying, Mr. Bonner is saying, is that I cannot give you assurances in this setting around a live planning application. That does not mean that details of that live planning application cannot be shared.
Which is contrary to what you've just been told. But anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Councillor Muswell.
Thanks, Chair. I actually have a question around the delivery programme. So in my experience with the play park in Tatonal, that was meant to have been procured in 2023 and delivered in 2024. It only, it was only delivered this year in July, 2020, 2025 July. So is, what are the chances that this is going to get pushed back and people have to, you know, young people have to, the community has to stay for a lot longer because in my experience, there's been constant delays around delivering play parks. And then in Tatonal Park, we were told we were getting two play parks, but we got one. So there's lots of things that just doesn't go to plan. So just wanted reassurance that this delivery programme is going to work to plan. Thank you.
I think the council will do everything that they can to deliver these play parks as proposed. It's a very, I mean, come on. Paul, do you have anything to add?
Well, well, just to say, obviously, the intention is that we release the procurement, we get the procurement, the tender responses, we do the evaluation, we appoint a contractor. We obviously have to discuss with the contractor what their mobilisation period is, but we want to get the hard work related to this play provision on site over the winter and then get on with the finishing works, the planting in the early spring. So that is the programme that we are going to try our very best to work to. As you say, things are often subject to delay, but the, the intention is, and everyone will be working, to have this delivered for next year so that we can have children playing there for next year. And it is a fairly extensive play park and it does have, you know, a significant number of play equipment. It's, it probably will be one of our best when we finish it. So I think it's worth waiting to see.
Thank you, councillor. Just to provide some assurances, part of the reason why it's that delegated decision is because it's a cumulative value over £500,000, which is why we've gone for a single contractor, which will expedite the process rather than going for a number of single contractors that then needs to be coordinated by the council. So we've got a single turnkey solution which should expedite the delivery. Thank you.
Many thanks for those points of clarification. I feel happy to take this decision. I think it's a really good bit of news and I think it's really great news for the residents in the area. My final decision is on our tree insurance policy and updated operational tree policy. This is to ensure that there is clarity around, around how our insurance and our operations are done, make sure they're effective and appropriate and that there's clear guidance for both the council and for residents. Nick, would you like to add anything? I'm sure I've missed lots there.
Thank you, councillor Wilson Markle. So this is our second operational tree policy, which provides councillors, the officers and a direct wayfinding to what the council does and does not do when it comes to managing trees in the public realm. It provides wayfinding for what can and can't be done by a resident to our trees, if it's overhanging, fruit on the car, when weapons win leaves fall. But also we're starting to see a number of more complex cases being brought forward by insurance providers in terms of disruption, alleged disruption from our trees onto property. And so we've included an update, which now includes our tree insurance policy, which does provide some direction for residents as to how they can engage and interface with our insurance services and not only providing the thresholds as to when we will and will not act, but also to provide guidance and support for councillors and for parish councils to engage with residents who do become worried about trees, the impact of trees. So our offering is becoming more, is becoming denser through the operational tree policy, when and will, when and will, we won't do something. But equally, the tree insurance policy is a new addition, which also helps us to manage insurance claims handlers who can be quite aggressive. They can, they can email councillors, they can email corporate leaders, they can email everybody to try and interface and get access to the council when they should be going through a particular process. So we hope that these documents will be very useful and that, again, it provides more support to our residents on what they can do, what they are empowered to do, and if they need to do something or ask someone to do something, where they can go to get those things done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. Do we have any public questions? I do not believe we do. We don't have any today for my items. Do I have any councillor questions? Councillor Geary?
Thank you. Interesting report. Seems a significant part of this is around subsidence and shrinkage. Not surprising, seeing as we're on clay soils here in the vast majority of the city. They named the soil, they named the soil series after, after one part of this city. So just in case you're interested. But obviously there's another issue which is hinted at the report, which is when trees fall over and cause damage. And it's a very small part of this, but I would have thought that would be a much more significant part of this report. The council is responsible for an awful lot of trees and an awful lot of those trees are probably not thinned in the, certainly as much as they should be. And you don't have to look further than out the window here to see trees that are far too dense for, to be, to be in the, the best health they could be, which means that we do run a risk that if some of those fall over and cause accidents, that we might not have managed them as well as we could and therefore could be liable for that. Have you got any views on that point?
Thank you, councillor Geary. We have a tree inspection survey, which ranks all of our trees from scarlet, pretty much purple, which means must be acted on a, now dead dangerous dying, all the way through to green. So we are going through all of the trees on our estate. We've risk mapped them using an algorithm so that we focus on the ones that are the highest risk first, i.e. trees next to a bus stop next to a school or trees that would fall on a road or trees that would fall on a railway or things like that. So we've been working our way through all of that. So we've got a risk profile for which we're doing that. We have a tree maintenance budget, which is, covers off both a reactive and a proactive programme. And what we've been trying to do is move reactive to proactive and that's been ongoing. We have a dedicated arb team to do that. We have seen a reduction in our insurance claims because we've been taking a proactive approach to managing insurance claims because we began, we've heat mapped where all the insurance claims are coming through. With regards to maintenance, we have a dedicated tree maintenance contractor. And in regards to CMK, in 2021, 22, we did crown lifting on all of the horse chestnuts and, and all of the various trees here. So we can always do more. Clearly, the amount of trees that have been planted, the density of trees is significant, but we do have a dedicated storms reaction budget, which deals with storms as and when trees come down. And we can't legislate, even though a tree looks healthy and it's been rated as healthy, if we get extreme winds, then that, that tree may still come down. So we still can't sort of legislate for things like the act of God side of things when it comes to trees coming down. But in terms of us being proactive, we have inspections, in terms of us heat mapping, in terms of us moving to a proactive schedule, this council is a lot further ahead than perhaps it was five to seven years ago. But again, any, any feedback is always helpful as to areas where we could focus on the third iteration of the operational tree policy.
How much do you think we could get the insurance bill down if we thinned our trees more regularly and moved into something, for instance, you know, a, a, a cycle very much like the Parks Trust are doing? I realise it's going to cost us more operationally, but how much will it save us in, in insurance premiums?
This is a very interesting question and I'd love to hear it answered. I do not think this is an appropriate forum for that question to be answered. So Peter, I'm happy for you to send that question. I'm happy for that to get an answer. If you want to ask it tomorrow, I'll make sure Nick has given me some information so I can answer it, but I don't think this particular setting is appropriate for it. Do I have any other queries? David?
Oh, I wasn't going to ask the question. It's nothing to do with planning. So I just wondered if, because Peter mentioned the Parks Trust, would there be any merit in over a period of time subcontracting, for want of a better term, more and more of our responsibilities and liabilities in the maintenance of trees to the Parks Trust? Simply because wherever the Parks Trust are managing land, Campbell Park and elsewhere, everybody always says the trees are magnificent, they're maintained to the best quality standards, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering if we could extend that good quality work to more and more of our trees? That may not be something you wanted to discuss this evening, but it is something that occurs.
I'll let Nick answer, but just from, from my knowledge, from my time on the Parks Trust board, but also in this role, we pay, we paid initially a lot of money for the Parks Trust to take that land on. And the work that they do, they spend, they have more money to be able to do the work to maintain our parks because of that endowment that they received when they took the parks on, the investments that they've been able to make. That it was paid when it was set up, the Development Corporation, when it was dec- I'm sorry. But we would, the point is, we would have to pay them the money to maintain. I think they use the same contractors as us in a lot of cases, particularly around the tree maintenance. And so we would just be, essentially what we'd be doing is paying more money, which would be really nice to do, but I'm not sure we, we have that money to be able to maintain them in the way that the Parks Trust do. But Nick?
Thank you, councillor. It's worth noting that even in, say, the green frame around CMK or where in zones five and six, as they're known on the grid roads, the, the dense trees, the Parks Trust have adopted a stance of sometimes the better way to promote the better trees is to cut down and thin. Now, that is a stance, but it is not a particularly popular one. So there is a differentiation here where we've got obviously a public land that's in trust, where there is an accountability around, well, we're going to thin the trees by cutting quite a lot of them down. In 2022, 23, when the Parks Trust were doing that and they only do it peacefully, it wasn't very popular and we were the ones that were answering those questions. Now, had it been us doing that, it might not been, it may have, there is a balance. So what I'm saying is, is there's, there's a line of sight around the way that the Parks Trust do that around thinning trees, removing trees in order to get a better quality stock, but fewer trees, whereas we at the moment don't do that. We are maintaining the majority of trees. And again, happy, I will look at, you know, what that means in terms of the quality of our stock. But it means not cutting down trees because politically and corporately to an extent, that is not favourable and perhaps not the best thing to do in terms of better quality trees, yes, but we are investing also in our trees as a carbon sink and in other things beyond that. So sometimes density is better than quality and I'd be happy to pick that up.
Interestingly, I had a, a conversation with one of our contractors a couple of weekends ago and they were telling me that they were being attacked by members of the public because they were chopping down trees. They were being verbally abused, people were being aggressive to them, confronting them. There is definitely something around. Thank you. I'm very pleased to take that decision and I shall now hand over to councillor Mahendran.
Thank you. I have one decision this evening, the award of supply contract to the low carbon heat supplier. I'm not planning to talk about anything in the annex. Councillors have indicated they're not talking about anything in the annex, so we're not going to discuss anything in the annex and don't need to exclude the public and press. I think this is the third delegated decision I've brought related to the heat network. So because of that, I don't have a lot to say. So I will just say this has been quite an odd and frustrating, the most frustrating delegated decision meeting that I've been to, and I think I can guess why, but in my work at the LGA, most councils I encounter take their delegated decisions in private rooms without anyone having access and ability to ask questions. So I'm not really going to have anyone feeling hard done by because they come here and can't have a question time with the officers. It gets put on the forward plan, the papers come out, you can ask questions in advance. And I just ask that we sort of mind our conduct when we're in the room. Onto the matter at hand. As I've mentioned before, we had over £4 million awarded to us for the public sector decarbonisation scheme. And we are doing works to connect the Wuffton Leisure Centre, the library and the civic offices to, hello Nigel, to a. to a zero carbon heat network will be one of the first in the UK and is incredibly forward thinking and innovative and very exciting. I'd like to thank Gemma and Nick for all of their work on this because they've done a huge amount of work on this. And I will just ask either of them if they have anything they would like to add.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, clearly, this is quite a major step forward for us in terms of having our first low carbon heat, low carbon access to resources and is indicative of what will become the first of a multitude of different contracts the council will have to start looking at. Obviously civic, the library, you know, flagship facilities, as is Wuffton Leisure Centre. But we all need to start thinking about what access to commodities such as electricity and heat are going to look like in a post fossilised combustion world. And this is the very beginning of what that starts to look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Gemma, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, nothing extra to add.
Thank you. We have no members of public. Do any councillors wish to speak? Councillor Geary?
Thank you. The report talks a number of places about costs that are going to either be going up or down on the council. Can I just ask that when this comes through into the budget papers, that that is pretty clear where they're going up and where they're coming down and the reasoning's behind it? Because that just makes it absolutely clear for us people scrutinising the budget and for other councillors looking at what's going on. So we just make sure, because sometimes it's not not as clear as it could be, somewhat opaque. So if we could make it as clear as possible, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick is nodding, so I assume that's fine. Yeah. Councillor Mazamill?
Thanks, Chair. So the current gas cost is £164,300. And the proposed MK yield, the heat network, is going to cost us £369,700, is an annual cost with your fixed costs. That's about 125% more than what we're already paying. I understand we want to get to net zero. But this is not a cost saving measure and we are trying to achieve net zero at a cost to residents. I know who's going to be paying for this 125% increase of the annual costs for these three buildings. And the other thing I want to add is also, you speak of the annualised cost of heat by spreading these capital costs over the life of this option. Be good to understand what the life you're talking about is and whether this full cost model behind that 25% savings, whether that can be shared with the budget committee as well, that they can go through that in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So the figures that you just presented councillor are not figures that are presented in the report. They're figures that have been generated by yourself. So that includes, so that figure that's been discussed is not presented within the report, but rather in a part of the report that is not summarised, is, I believe, in the pink papers?
I think it's the annex that's not confidential.
Okay. So in which case, are those figures, I mean, if that's not on pink papers, and I thought it was meant to be, annex one and two, but if not, then what that is, is that is the MPV cost. So those figures, as I understand it, do not include the increase in gas price?
I think, so the point is that the reliance on foreign oil and gas is quite unstable and we've seen significant rises in that. If we move to a more sustainable model of heating, then we give ourselves energy security, which means that we aren't reliant on those things, particularly as the world seems to be going to, yeah, difficult to say without swearing, but global politics is in a very bad place. So the chances hmm? Volatile, that's a much better word. The chances of sort of global events rocking those prices again is, it's not a small, Nigel, is not insignificant. So the point is that, one of the points of sustainability is not just sort of green and making things green, there is actually building a city that is properly sustainable in the long term and being able to be self-reliant in terms of energy and energy security is something that is a real benefit to our residents and is a real strength.
Now, if it's okay, it's probably just worth mentioning that when primary infrastructure is built, so let's say, for example, the telecoms network was built, British Telecom built it, but British Telecom managed it, as was then. And the cost of that infrastructure was included in the cost of the services that were being purchased. As those services are paid off, that cost disappears. So at the moment, the cost of building the infrastructure is included within what we're purchasing. Now, at the moment, because this is a new infrastructure asset, there is no secondary market, there is no secondary provider. What we will see is we will start to see more providers come on stream. And as that asset has been paid for, so for example, in the early 90s, once the telecoms network had been paid for, you had Mercury, you had all of these different telecoms sectors come in because they didn't need to pay line rental, because they didn't need to pay, the capital expenditure costs had been paid off. So therefore, embodied within this additional cost is the actual cost of paying back the construction of all the pipework and everything coming into Milton Keynes. We've got the PSDS loan, which covers the actual building works, but this is covering some of that infrastructure cost. And what we're going to see is, as we start to see this network expand, some of those embedded capital costs will be built in to new developments, including potentially MKE Stiff, that signs up to the heat network, or anything that gets built up to the heat network. But as we see new providers enter the market, as they use the heat network itself, or as we see additional heat networks coming on board, then those costs will start to disappear. And as councillor Mahendran has annotated quite clearly, we are divorcing ourselves from a highly volatile market in gas, which is index linked, and moving into a local sustainable source of heat, which provides, you know, certainty and moves away from, you know, there being spikes in price as we saw in 2021 and 22. So that's what the report tries to echo. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Only very briefly, because I've said, having worked for Mercury, I was fascinated by this, drift back to the late 1970s and more especially the mid 80s. But I had a long conversation with Nick about how that was formulated and how the market was completely manipulated by the Thatcher government. It wasn't a true market at all, but that's neither here nor there. But it's interesting to hear. So given this utopia we're heading towards, that Nick has outlined, across the expanded Milton Keynes, how can we incorporate more of the same into things like Plan MK 2050 to ensure that as new areas develop in and around Milton Keynes, we can incorporate these sorts of solutions, this sustainable solution into the future Milton Keynes? Because it is a very attractive utopian vision that Nick puts before us.
Thankfully, the cabinet member for sustainability and planning is the same person. The Reg 19 plan will be coming out next month. Can't talk about any changes that might be in that before then. But we're having conversations. Is that okay? Yeah. Right. No one else? I will take the decision then and end the meeting at 6.39.